... rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening on an ice toasty night here in Danville. Thanks for showing up on Tuesday, not Monday, because no one would have been here. All right, we have the minutes of, does that be August 20th?
Yes.
We have the minutes of August 20th to approve. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move to about the minutes.
All right, I have a motion to approve from Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meetings are approved, minutes are approved? Let's start the meeting. Starting off with proclamation for Constitution Week, that would be me. This is a proclamation that we've kind of modified over the years, and actually this particular one was created by my students last year at the request of outside groups. And I would like, with the approval of the council, to go ahead and read it, and then, if we so choose, to vote on it, vote on it tonight. This is a proclamation by the Danvile Town Council to proclaim September 17th to the 23rd, 2018, as Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution in convention, and whereas the creation of the United States Constitution is one of the most important events in the history of our great nation, and whereas the Constitution is the embodiment of our civil liberties, represents the basic foundation of our government, and continues to be an example of freedom and democracy, and whereas it is proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the President of the United States of America to issue a proclamation design, designating September 17th as Citizenship Day and the week to be proclaimed as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it hereby proclaimed by the Danvile Town Council that September 17th to the 23rd, 2018 be designated as Constitution Week in Danville, Indiana, and urge all citizens to reflect on this momentous document and to participate in any observances of this patriotic and iconic document that has helped shape our country, proclaim and sign this day, September 4th, 2018. Motion to accept this proclamation?
I'll move it.
All those in favor of this proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Sign that. Next, we have a public hearing on the airport annexation ordinance 13, 2018. Laura, it's been a long time coming.
Third and final phase, public hearing tonight.
Okay.
Taking comments.
Close our meeting. Open up public comments for airport annexation, super annexation. Any comments? Now forever hold your peace. All right, I'll get all that meeting closed, open up our meeting again. And council, we have ordinance 13, 2018 in front of us, annexing territory to the town of Danville for the Gordon Graham Airport for Phase 3, Super Voluntary Annexation. Comments, questions, discussions?
About time, so I would move that we approve and adopt Resolution 11, 2018, or, I'm sorry, 13, 2018.
I have a motion to accept ordinance number 13.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I thought it had already been read. I apologize.
No, no, that's all right.
Apologize.
All right.
That'll be the next one.
Okay, so we can set that aside very much, and we will move on to the fiscal plan, adoption of Resolution 11, 2018. Can we adopt this?
Yes, this you can adopt.
All right. So, let me flip over to, here we are. Resolution number 11, 2018, a fiscal policy resolution for annexing contiguous territory to the town of Danville, Indiana, Gordon Graham Airport, Phase 3, Super Voluntary Annexation. What is the will of the council?
I'll move that we adopt fiscal plan for the airport.
I have a motion to adopt this resolution. Do I have a second? Second by Tom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution 11 has been passed. With ordinance 11, or ordinance 13 next week, or next time. All right, we're moving right down the line. Oh, say this correctly, Playmate mat rental. Jenny?
Haven't been happy with our current company that we use to rent mats from. They haven't been changing them out the last six months. We've just had several problems where I've had to connect with them and have them come back out, and they just keep increasing their prices. And so Kathy and I started talking to some other companies, and we found this play mat company be highly recommended from the government center and from the fairgrounds and different organizations here in town. So Kathy and I met with them, and it's actually going to be an annual savings of over $4,000, We do have to buy out our air contract because we still have a year with them, but that's only going to be $2,000, so we'll make up that difference in the first year and continue to have the savings. So the mats that they came out to show Kathy and I, they're a lot more durable, they have the rounded edges, those mats are always rolling up on us, there's huge trip hazard there. These look a lot nicer, and we think that they'll hold up and last longer, especially in the snow with all the slush and everything that's tracked into the building. These have more, they'll collect the water down in them more than what we currently have.
If they're not fulfilling their contract, why would we have to buy them?
We could do that.
I mean, if the reason we're canceling is we're unhappy with their service and they're not delivering the mats, I think that's grounds.
Right, yeah, and we could definitely try to do that. Absolutely, yeah. I'm just going, you know, based on the agreement that we'd signed, that's the buyout.
Kathy and Dennis? Jenny, what do you need from us? Is this just a heads up more than anything else?
Yeah, and just your approval.
Okay. Vote approval or a nod of the head?
Consensus?
Yeah, I think consensus.
Okay, and I do like Marcia's idea that maybe we can investigate any kind of cost savings by saying not living up to your obligation, unless they're meeting the letter of the law and not necessarily.
Right, right. Yeah, I'll definitely check into that, because we have documentations and emails where Kathy and I both have called them, and, yeah.
And I do like saving $4,000.
I'll help you with that, I do it for a living.
Okay.
Okay, great. Anything else on that? Beautiful. Okay, Jenny, you're still up. Budget review.
So after our last meeting and the budget was presented, I went back through to look at what we could do to bring the cash reserve up, and you'll see the bullet points there where we decreased the town manager's salary back to where...
Salary increase.
Right. And then we removed one patrolman out of edit. We, in the original presentation, we had two patrolmen that were going to be added back into the general. This is allowing one patrolman to stay in the edit and one to go in the general. And you're looking at around $78,000 in doing that. So that decreased the general budget by around $78,000, and that will also free up some funds for the RDC, which is what we were trying to do with the edit fund by removing one patrolman and taking it back to the general fund. And then in between time, we received word that our insurance increase isn't going to be as high as they had anticipated. They originally thought 11.9%, and it's actually going to be 8.9%, so I took that out as well. And then we looked at the council wages and increasing those for $9,000 for the council president and $8,000 for each council member, which was a savings of $5,000 annually. And so you'll see in your packet the projected cash reserves from 1%, 2%, and 3%, and what raises calculated in. I typed up a one-page summary for you guys that I gave to you tonight that shows with the final word of the insurance premium increases, how that's going to affect each employee's out-of-pocket cost, that's just employee, not the town's portion, and then what a 1% raise would look like for each position within the town of Danville, just to give you guys an idea, and then the bottom, of course, is what we increased and decreased.
Thank you for this.
Jenny, when, you know, we've always tried to keep the reserves up for our bond rating.
Right.
And I'm assuming that when they look at our reserves, they look at the overall number for each particular...
Exactly.
So do we know what, with the budget at the 1%, 2%, and 3%, what our overall reserve percentage is? Because if I look at these, they're all pretty high with the exception of general.
Exactly.
So if we looked at overall the way we used to, we might be well over where we need to be.
Right, right. I don't have that exact percentage, but you're exactly right in saying that. We're taking the hardest hit, of course, in the general fund, and the other funds are above where we, our goal is.
I think our, when we were calculating it based on our overall cash reserve, we were always a target, trying to reach a target of 25.
Yes, exactly, and not to go below 20.
Right.
Goal was always 25 and never to fall below 20.
Feel real strongly about the 20.
But if you look at the overall, I think we're going to be well over that. When you compare to the other funds being in the 70s and the 48, and so I'd be curious to see what the overall...
Yeah.
Reserve percentage is, if I could do that.
I can email you guys that this week.
Yeah, I'm glad that we're able to leave the new SRO in there and move one of the patrolmen out of edit.
And we're anticipating the school is going to fund half of that SRO, so the discussion...
I think they committed to that already.
Yeah, they hope, it hasn't gone before the school boards yet, so we don't have 100%. But Dr. Schaefer feels like, in support of it.
Maybe all of our officers that aren't on duty could swing by the board meeting next day, just to say hi. Well, thank you. What is the pleasure of the council at this point? Are we just accepting this information, we're not actually acting on anything because we have to have it?
We have to act on it tonight.
We have to act on it.
Yes, because the next meeting's our public hearing, and then the adoptions, the first meeting.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the council here? We have 1%, or 2%, or 3%, and we can always do a no percent, but that hasn't been presented, and I don't think any of us want to do that. Marcia does make a good point. I'm, I like keeping that cash reserve. I know that your document says 15% recommended minimum, but I remember on a lot of bond hearings, they, that 20 was the magic number, and I really don't like dipping below that. And on, on this 1%, if you look at the general, it's 19.44. If we go to the 2%, it's 18.72. And the 3%, it's 18. Now, and I realize that there are some of these reserves that are percentage way higher, but they're also smaller accounts, too.
Small accounts.
You know, if you look at the big ones, for instance, the general, obviously, and the next, next biggest one is water fund, and even, but water's a different animal because they have their own different funding. I could recommend a 1%, which if we look at Jenny's chart, will at least cover the insurance increase for most of our employees, the ones on a family, down at the labor, might not fare so well. But that would just be my recommendations. But of course, you know, this is always subject to the will of council. Just throwing that out there.
What do you prefer, Jenny? What do you think?
My recommendation is 1% or 2%. And we'd be in the best shape, of course, at 1%, keeping our cash reserve as close to our goal as possible.
I tend to agree with Mike. I think it'd be prudent to do 1%.
Agree.
I would, again, I would like to have seen the overall reserves number before I said that, because 2 would still keep us under the, keep us over the 20. I don't, I can't guess, because I don't know. So if we have to make a decision tonight, then I think it's prudent that we stay at 1%. I just hate leaving some on the table for the employees if we could.
Yeah, it's, it goes back to what we always talk about, sustaining it as well, so...
Dennis? Do what I can, employees, I'd rather give them 2, but if we're looking at 1, what we need to do for the town right now, we have to go with 1.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid that if we look, he's really off the table. You all agree with that?
Yeah, I agree with that. I would like...
This is about a $40,000 a year difference, but it's 40,000 a year, 40,000 every year dipping into those cash reserves. I'm afraid that we're going to look at 1, getting down, they're closer to 15, oh, then. It's going to be somebody else's problem, and I hate to burden them with that problem. I think if we can at least give our employees 1% rate, we've had some pretty slim ears in council back in the earlier days, a quarter mile.
Right.
The other part of that is Marcia said, hate to leave something on the table, but that might, council that does the 2020 budget, that they, we might put them in a little bit better shape, better increase.
You've got to remember that 2020, you've got a census to do. But when that census occurs, population growth goes up, that makes a difference, too.
Haven't we made the salary decision later in the year?
We adopt the salary ordinance later in the year, but for budgeting, we deal with the overall budget approval. We usually don't adopt the salary ordinance until December.
So, this is an odd question, I've never been in this situation. If we do pass 1% tonight, and by December we feel we're in better shape, can we give 2% in December? Because we've, no, it's, one is there.
It has to be the other way around.
Okay, just take away.
If we would pass 2%, but would determine that we can, but we can drop back to 1% without...
Okay, that makes sense.
I can always enter the budget high, which we do anyway.
Any other discussion?
Is there any consideration to go ahead and enter it at the 2%?
I'll say, I guess that's not the worst, I guess that's not the worst idea, if we have the ability to take a clean, another look at it when we... I'm for that. I'd rather go with 2 now, and if we don't have the money, drop it back to 1, then, then we're protected. And if we have the money, then the employees get the 2%.
I agree with that.
I didn't know that, but I'd agree with 2 as well and drop it back.
I hope if we do this, that we make sure that our employees understand that there is the possibility. What will happen? We will hear 2%, and then if we have to give a 1%, hell, you're... The old philosophy is, there's a no percent.
Knowing that we tried.
Your department heads could relay that, if we do that. Tell 3, 4.
17%.
Do we have more? Now Ray.
What, you want Ray 10%? Okay, before we get off, off task here, folks, excuse me, we have this budget, we have a 1%, or 2%, or 3% increase to the salaries and wages for the 2019 budget. I'll take any kind of motion or... A motion.
I would move that we submit the budget, assuming a 2% increase, based on the budget presented with that change, and then in December come back, use the salary, or whenever we put the overall reserve.
Second. Does that sound good to you, Gary? All right, I have a motion by Marcia, a second by Dennis. We don't need a roll call, vote on this. All of those in favor of assuming a 2% increase, with the caveat that it may drop down to 1% based on our decision, the final decisions in December, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 5-0. Please keep in mind, things could change, but at least a 1%.
Are you guys okay with everything else with the council salaries and the...
We've got to be prudent.
Everything's good there.
Thank you for putting it all together.
Utility master plan, water and wastewater, Jimmy and Jerry Show.
Good evening. That was exciting, from our point of view.
Yeah. Yeah, nobody's losing their job tonight.
We received four good qualifications, four different firms. And wondering if the council would entertain bringing those firms in, 17, to, at the most, 15-minute presentation to you guys.
A work study or at the meeting?
It can be a work study or at the meeting, whatever you would like.
Whatever's convenient for the council. What's...
I would like to hear from them.
Yes, so that they can present where they see themselves five years, and how this is going to be.
Manage of the work study, start a little early, they, those groups can present, they don't have to wait till the end of the council meeting, because it is a, it is a party ahead meeting. Our second meeting is awful long. The downside is, it extends our, our meeting time a little bit, and I don't know how that cuts into your business, Jim.
It's, I, I agree. I like the idea of, I think I like the idea of a work study.
I do.
I see it as something that's...
Less distracting, it's right there.
Less distracting, it's a separate...
I'm fine with that.
That way the council, like I say, this is for a 20-year plan, and governing body needs to, we feel, have a bigger hand in the decision-making, along with that. And that's what you're there for. And we can give our insight, but like I say, all four companies are excellent companies, it's just, it's going to be a hard decision, but what we feel would be best for their overall for the town. A lot of money, and...
It's less of an impact for you guys than it is, is ability.
Can we not put the insurance off to the next month, the work study?
Forward, I think, whereas we're talking 15 minutes of presentation for these, probably talking 10 or less insurance, you'll have those about four then. So we can do that during the public meeting.
Do the insurance during the public? Is that your recommendation, then? We do, we do these guys at the work study, and do insurance, agent of record?
I think we're still on the same course.
What do you guys feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
Good, we'll do that.
Okay, work study, we can kind of give a general consensus, and then at the meeting, make the final decision.
And you got four, right?
Four.
So we need to go, what, at 5:45? Because four is an hour.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah, 5:45. Everybody make 5:45?
Yep.
Tom, your question?
Yes. So these companies, you've qualified them technically, or to what your needs are? They all pass your needs?
Yeah, they passed everything that we sent out.
So when reading this thing, it sounds like you're, you are just going to pick one, and then discuss the price after?
Yes, that's part of the, part of the thing.
Doesn't sound very...
Well, normally, what should we do? You pick, you would pick the company you feel is best to do that. They would negotiate a price that's negotiable. If you cannot negotiate with them, you go to the number two.
We didn't want two companies providing two different services...
Yeah.
And going with the cheapest one that's not in the town's best interest 20 years from now.
Sure, I understand that, but if they qualify technically, that means they all have red shirts on. Now it just comes down to how much it costs.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure they all qualified first, which is what we're in the process of doing.
So you haven't made sure that, so these guys are not qualified yet.
Not until you guys say they are.
You say that, yeah.
And when we say...
They will negotiate the price.
And when we say they're all qualified...
Then we could ask for four prices.
Then that would, that's what I would do, I would ask them all for prices so they compete, anyways.
Whatever the council desires.
Whatever, whatever you want.
We might determine that we like one plan better than the other, rather than to have them go through all the effort of building a, a price. Yeah, it's a lot of work for them for this kind of...
So we are not necessarily...
20 years...
We are not necessarily saying, here's what we want. We have four different companies that are saying, Company A says, we feel this is best for you, Company B says, so it's not necessarily... It's all in the, all in the package. I'm just saying, it's not necessarily applicable for it.
And they could be providing different levels of services, and it's going to cost...
So it's not like you're going to have a...
Which is why we want it to be...
So this is a 20-year deal, so I think we should put some effort into it.
Yes.
And is there a combination that you can use two companies?
No.
Preference.
No.
Typically, no. Now, once we start building, this company will oversee build projects, and there'll be other companies that can come in, do design, build.
Okay, so before we make a decision, we'll have some more to talk about, correct?
Yeah, and it's all, everything's in your packets and...
Okay, thank you.
We've got references and everything for you. For over that? Yeah, 5:45 on 17. For management, Harry, help Laura?
Yeah, typically what we follow is a qualification-based selection method, whereby you interview four firms, then you rank them, priority, we negotiate salary or, or cost.
After they know we picked them.
After they're number one, go to them. These firms, number one, go to number two. At the year, they set their prices, just like an attorney, and it all depends on how many hours of service.
Yeah, that's all okay, but I just want to make sure, if you pick me, and I run a company, I'll try to make as much money as I could do.
Sure, that's where we're coming to negotiation.
Yeah, we, we have the right to refuse.
And the other thing, over 20 years, that's a hell of a long time at this stage.
Oh, yeah, you can't predict 20 years. That's 20. You can't predict 20, really. All you could do is have a base, 20-year base.
But there's a lot of information out there with the Chamber of Commerce, the county, census, the information's there, we just need to put together...
I always did contracts with, three years with one-month termination, but really, they were only one-month contracts.
Negotiate with our other people.
I have a heartbeat.
So are you anticipating, then, that after, after we meet with this, we'll be able to give you a recommendation at the regular meeting? And all depends, all depends on how the council feels, you know, if you got split two and two. Well, if we take time, we don't. Similar.
Yeah, yeah.
Make a recommendation. Takes a couple of weeks, are you guys okay with that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
And I would also like, um, some feedback from you, as far as your recommendations as well, because you certainly know more about this than what we do.
We could do, yeah, we, we will give, give our input, and do it like that, because, like I say, we've worked with a lot of these firms.
Four good firms.
Yeah, and, and, so. So there's, you know, it's gonna be a tough decision, but the bottom line is, is which one town council feels most comfortable with.
Okay, then we'll do the work study next.
Okay.
Seventeenth? Seventeenth, yes, seventeenth, five forty-five, in this room.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right. Anything from the public? Yes, you're naming what you do. Sorry Doug, what I gotta do? For the record, sir.
Never seen you before, no. I'm Doug Cat, live at Four Woodland Place here in Danville, uh, in the Wildwood, Wildwood neighborhood. We have a problem there as the entrance into the neighborhood, um, I'm not sure how to solve it, but the, the drain that goes underneath the road, I don't think is big enough to handle the water flow whenever we have the heavy rain. Used to be, before the neighborhoods came in, out west of us, but now we have the rain comes in, and it'll be flowing that deep over the road. My car makes it, but a Honda has a tough time getting through there. And sometimes, there's logs in there. I've picked up logs that are probably that big around and about that long, that washed up there, but you don't even see until the water's gone. But my biggest concern is the water washing out, the dirt underneath the road, and not knowing it. You pull up, you think you're gonna drive through it, there may be a big hole there. And that is the only entrance into the neighborhood. So, sir. As far as works, I've mentioned to Marcia, and I mentioned to Tom, as to what to do, and, just in, in passing, so I'm.
Did Barry leave?
Just one reason nothing's happened, probably.
Question? Okay, all right. Well Doug, what we can do is, 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 now that you've made it publicly aware for us. We can have Barry take a look at it, Stormwater, and we can have him work with Ray.
Good.
If you can just get with them and give them the particulars, especially since we're expecting this weekend, Thursday.
Okay. And so when you say particulars, what do you mean?
Uh, just exactly what you told us, Barry, Barry's not here.
Oh, okay.
He's gonna know, he may know a little bit more about it than we do.
Okay, sure.
And then when it comes to the integrity of the road, that's, that's Ray's province.
Okay. That's you, I don't know if it's sewer, if it's rain.
And then I'd suggest, depending on when the rain is, if it's over the weekend, to take pictures, if it's bad again, so that we can see what it looks like when it's bad, because it may all dissipate by Monday when they're there.
Yeah, and it, it happens, maybe, two, three times a year?
Okay.
It's not like every rain, but.
As long as our guys know it, and, and telling us is good, but, but we're gonna turn around and tell them.
That's fine, I just didn't know where to start, so, yeah, okay.
I like the way you raised your name, you just feel like I'm in the classroom.
Do you think it's a capacity problem, or it's plugged? It's plugged.
I'm, I'm guessing it's a capacity problem, I don't know, I'm guessing that. I haven't crawled down in there and taken a look, so I don't really know.
I didn't get your, Jerry involved in this, did you?
Plug.
Might be. Okay, that it?
That, that's it. Laura, Gary, do you have any comments on that?
That drainage flow comes all the way from Charlie Miles property, down in behind the war zone, to Port area.
Right.
So, had to go down and check them.
We will let, he's in here, so, he's heard it, and we'll get Barry on it, and. Good point, that it closes weekend or anything like that. Pictures, because, you know, these guys can't get good, because. Or you, it's just.
No, I understand, I, I just appreciate you taking a look at it, yeah.
I think they can at least take a look at it, and then, Ray, real quick, on something like this, would you normally talk to Doug about, let's say there's a question about the road, is that something that you'd come back and talk to us before you talk to Doug, or would you like? Okay, so you hear it right from the horse's mouth, no pun, no insult. Be expert.
All right, good.
Thank you.
You guys, flag down Barry. All right, around the room, Gary.
I think the only thing I can report is, I don't believe the ultras.
It's not what I read on chatter.
I know.
I'm sorry, I had to bring that up, that was just way too funny.
Slaughtering cats.
I know, and, uh, but, there are none present.
Looking around this room, I think you're wrong.
Well, good, then, then it was money well spent, I suppose. Question is, where did they go?
I think they went to Avon.
Hazard, Oreo, what's the difference?
Oreo.
We're still, we're still continuing to work on the course of.
Good. Laura? Ah, Barry.
Barry.
Barry. Barry, have you met Mr. Cat? Well, he's gonna introduce himself, and he's got something to chat with you about. Thanks very much.
So, as Gary mentioned, the census is fast approaching, and in 2019, we're not allowed to actually record any annexations. So there's a few that are out there that are super voluntary, that are trying to get in this year. So, um, the Danville Christian Church is, um, marketing their property out on Tenth Street. So you can see in your handout, it's highlighted in blue, it's about, um, twenty acres or so. So, um, they want to try and get that annex before the end of this year. If, uh, as is our custom, if you give me consent to accept their petition, uh, have a schedule planned out for them, and we can get it done before the end of the year. It'd be December when Jenny's getting it recorded, but we can get it done, so, just looking for your consent, if you'd like to annex this twenty acre parcel.
All right, you have consensus.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Oh, you're here. Great for my students. Yeah.
Where's it gonna be?
Maybe you got here for the kids, you're out here. I know. After Taco Bell, you won't talk to me anymore. Okay.
You said O'Reilly Auto Parts?
Um, I, I should.
Be nice if we knew some of this, being on the council.
Wait, wait, wait.
O'Reilly Auto Parts.
A new building? Riley? Wait, 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 what is this?
Isn't it next to Asia Walk? And nothing has been filed.
Okay.
Jimmy John's has to move.
Okay.
Gotcha, okay, good. They normally work pretty fast, though.
Riley's is not a done deal, they're in chatter.
I thought that was funny.
We have no paperwork.
No signs or anything like that, or, okay, all right. I didn't know about O'Reilly, but Jimmy John's one, I thought was pretty close to truth, that I, I wanna come to the source. Thank you.
What's, what's the status of Woodland Terrace? Are they still waiting on FFA? FFA approval?
Please, any update on the property next to, uh, Mayberry's? Guys can build a three story building there?
There's another deal.
Know about it, or we just wait?
Wait.
Great. Anything else, Laura? Okay, thank you. Hey, I, I should've, uh, checked with our department heads real quick, just real quickly, department heads, anybody, Ray? Steve Morgan, you're up next.
Diana, come up here.
As you all know, the square was delayed one week, um, and, uh, the last section of concrete will be poured tomorrow morning, and hopefully, we can get it dry enough, open it up for fair on the square. It will be striped Thursday, so, we are still working very hard on getting that done, and making the town look good. And while I'm up here, I wanna thank each one of you for being here tonight, and especially Dennis for being here on his birthday.
Thanks, Ray. Steve Morgan?
I apologize for not being on the agenda tonight, I just have a couple of things. This weekend is our hog roast, uh, so hopefully, uh, you'll have the ability to come and attend. Uh, we'll be in our usual place, the Old Town Hall parking lot, which is, uh, now the prosecutor's lot. Also, uh, this month is National Preparedness Month, uh, so we're encouraging people to, uh, uh, go over your preparedness plans, make sure you have three days of rations, uh, batteries, uh, anything that you think you might need in the event that we would lose power, or a tornado comes through, or some type of disaster, so, um, kind of a big deal. Uh, the last thing I have, um, we're wanting to use, I, I think we're going to do it again at Station Ninety-two, but we're wanting to do our nine eleven memorial. Um, I have ordered new flags, our old flags were, quite honestly, looking a little decrepit, so, uh, I've got new flags that should be here Thursday, uh, so I needed one of council's consensus to go ahead and, uh, put that display up at, uh, Station Ninety-two.
Are you good with that? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other department head, real quick? Jenny?
I just wanna thank.
Barry, are you waving like you wanna say, just waving to Marcia? Particular reason why? Uh, where's Will?
It's a storm, it was, uh, collapsed in this three footer. We found a bridge. Didn't get across the river. Always a surprise.
Yeah.
Whole bridge, it's a one.
All right. Historically significant? Good to know. All right, Jenny?
I just wanna thank everyone for your work with the budget and all your help.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Phillips and everybody with the golf cart, uh, ordinance, and I've already heard, somebody's already making money off it. And, uh, they got about five carts there, they're rebuilding, pretty good. Next project is, I'd like to, uh, work on something, I've been doing it already, it's a commuter service by train to Indianapolis. I heard that train would take twenty minutes to get in, so you could take your Uber golf cart guy down to the train station and go into Indianapolis in twenty minutes. That sounds all well and good, but it's not as easy as that. So I've been talking to quite a few different, uh, departments and that, and I'm down to the South Shore Company in northern Indiana, and their commuter service, the Amtrak does not do that, they do big towns, Indianapolis to Chicago. So the backup to that plan, if it can't be a train, would be a rubber tire train, and there is, uh, funding for that, for eighty percent, and twenty percent to town, uh, for four years. Anyways, what I propose is that I'm gonna finish what I'm doing, and then give you my results, but I think a nice commuter service to Indianapolis would be good. Maybe increase the property values of people if they want to, uh, go work in Indianapolis and they don't wanna commute by car. And also for us to go into Indianapolis and have a nice meal, and a, and a play or something, and come back home, and then pick up your Uber golf cart guy to take you home.
Okay, well, have at it, and just make sure that they actually both make it into Danville. Last group, one of us.
No.
I just want to, um, thank Ray, and his staff, and Julie, and Barry, and everyone. Paving is great, uh, it was painful for a little while, but it was well worth it, and it all looks great, and I heard a lot of great compliments, so, thank you.
Dennis?
A couple of things, uh, the Chris Cares Foundation, Chris Goins Foundation, his family's gonna be passing out flags like he always did on nine eleven, uh, there in front of, uh, near the old Diesels between Thirty-six and Washington Street, so, uh, drive-by, pick up a flag there on nine eleven. And then, um, I think we're lucky that we come to these meetings, and you visit the Town Hall, and it's, it's always clean, there's, it's never dirty, and I just wanna thank Kathy Montague for doing such a great job keeping our Town Hall clean for us.
Wow. I've only got two things, and, uh, one's a little selfish, uh, I had a Danville senior girl getting a bad act, Three Hundred East, Lee Klein, and, there's some fundraisers going around at the school, uh, next couple of weeks, and, and the reason I say selfish, doing that, uh, proceeds of fund, uh, going to, uh, the Klein family, and the Kirk family as well. So if you see that out and about, uh, kids, the kids wanted to do that. Their faculty sponsor, I put a shameless plug in here for them. Uh, secondly, um, I guess the only other thing, I guess the paving was awesome, things are moving along nicely, it's, uh, same, we found a new bridge. But, uh, there have been some great improvements over the summer. Get the square, way, really gonna help our town. Last thing is, you know.
Thanks, Mike.
For you, but I don't want.
Claim docket.
Move to approve.
We've got a motion to approve from the birthday boy, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Jim. All those in favor signify by singing happy birthday, those, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Claim docket is passed, we are adjourned.